Thank you. I'd like to call the meeting to order of the City of Manona zoning Board of Appeals Thursday, August 18th, 2022. Doug, I assume that you've got the roll here?
Yes.
So can I have a motion to approve the minutes of July 21st, 2022? Someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
I wasn't there, so I can't second it.
Neither was I.
Okay, am I allowed to second Doug?
I would assume so, yes.
Okay, since I was there and others weren't, okay, then we have a second. Any changes, corrections, additions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. The minutes are approved. We'll move to number five. Oh, sorry, I skipped over appearances, but I'm assuming since we're doing a public hearing that we don't have anybody else here for appearances, we'll go to number five, a public hearing. Todd and Linda Keller at 5612 Thunderbird Lane are requesting a variance from Manona Municipal Code of Ordinance, Section 480-24D4C, rear yard setbacks for the purpose of building a new screen porch and deck to the rear of the property, case number Z007-2022. Todd and Linda, without will open it up to you.
Sure, hi, Todd Keller, Linda Keller, we're the homeowners at 5612 Thunderbird Lane. We'd like to have our representative, David Ress, speak on our behalf tonight.
Good evening, everyone. My name is David Ress. I'm an attorney, but more importantly, I'm friends with Todd and Linda. They just asked me to come here today and present this. And of course, if you have questions for them directly, you can ask. As you can see from the packet, Todd and Linda are asking for a variance to build a screened-in patio that will sit over the existing deck. It'll be slightly larger, but mostly the same footprint. The current setbacks there, the current deck actually, non-conforming deck. Our understanding is that when it was built, which pre-existed Todd and Linda's ownership of the house, there was a smaller setback, which allowed that deck to be constructed. However, with the change in, I'm being honest with Todd and Linda, that deck as it currently sits is a portion of it is within the 40-foot setback. So to build a screened-in patio, which they learned as they hired the contractor and started the work, would actually be non-conforming with the current setback, at least in one portion of it. So they have asked for a variance, and I'll get into the specific factors, and I won't take up too much time here, but just a little context on how they got to this place. The current deck, quite frankly, is unsafe and is just not very usable anymore. It's outlived its useful life. Again, that deck existed before they bought the house. It's braced by some two-by-fours. There's some concern of rotting at the footing of this deck. So one way or another, the deck needs to be addressed. And when Todd and Linda made that decision, they thought, why don't we do it in a way that'll allow us to get our backyard back, for lack of a better term. As you can see in the pictures, Todd and Linda prefer the backyard to be as natural as possible. It doesn't have a traditional Madison Park grass seed. It's a natural growth, and they like it that way. It fits with the neighborhood and it's what their preferences. But that comes with some unfortunate downsides, which are the bugs. And some weeks, maybe they get lucky and there aren't that many bugs out there, but more often than not, there are bugs. And it's really impaired, if not completely eliminated, their ability to enjoy their backyard. So that led them to the decision of, well, maybe we can do a screened-in patio. We can use our backyard the way we'd like to. And then they found out about this setback issue. And in addition, there's some other concerns with the deck. As it stands now, it's a first-floor deck, but they have a sloped lot, so the lot slopes down as you move towards the back of it. It's the only deck, it's the only exit to the rear of the house right now. They'd like to, when they build this screened-in patio, if they're allowed to, put a set of stairs to the side of it. Now, those stairs would actually be outside of the setback, so it's really not subject to the variance, but it would allow for an extra exit from the rear of the house, which they currently do not have. The first floor of their house is where mostly the living area is, the kitchen, living room, et cetera. To exit, of course, they can do it from the front, but if they ever were in the back of the house through the living room, which is where the deck is near, it would require jumping out of windows, that sort of thing, if they really had to get out of there. So of course, they want to enjoy their backyard, but there's a safety concern of creating an extra exit for the house. So in terms of what, why we believe that the variance would be appropriate here is, quite frankly, conformity with the current setback would create an unnecessary hardship. If, my, our understanding is that if they kept the exact same footprint, building a screened-in patio by virtue of having a roof on it will constitute a structure, which means it needs to conform with the current version of the ordinance, which it simply cannot do based on a unique aspect of the lot. The back corner of the lot, the back corner of the lot line has a, it jets out closer into the property. It's not a straight line, lot line in the back. Had it been a straight lot line in the back, this wouldn't be an issue, but it's only because of that one little portion of the back corner of the lot that puts this deck within the 40-foot setback. So for Todd and Linda to build this screened-in patio and to conform with that, it quite frankly, would be impossible. They considered alternatives. For example, could we make this thing small enough that it fits outside of the 40-foot setback? If they did that, it would turn a deck/patio into a balcony, essentially. There'd be maybe three or four feet of usable space outside of the patio door. So that, that's really not feasible, especially if they want to build a stairwell off the side of it. That needs to be wide enough to have a safe access to the to the ground floor from the, from the deck. There was then the issue of, well, maybe we can move it over. You know, maybe we could slide it over more, because the farther you get to the opposite side of the house, the closer you are to the normal, quote-unquote, "normal" back lot line, that would make it doable then. The problem with that is obviously there's a patio door there, so it has to stay within that patio door. The first floor has a kitchen, bedrooms, et cetera, so short of ripping the whole first floor up and totally switching sides of the house, that deck has to stay within that patio door. But perhaps more importantly, there's a chimney that sits to the, if you're staring at the back of the house, to the left of the deck. The structure, if it's allowed to be built, would be anchored to the roof of the house, meaning the roof of the screened-in patio would essentially sit on top of the roof of the house. There's a chimney there, so they can't interfere with that chimney, meaning they can only move it over so far before they're going to hit that chimney. Essentially, as you see here in the plans, that side of the deck would extend three feet out, which by the way, is still outside of the setback. But that's essentially as far as they can go over before they hit problems with the chimney. So there really is not a reasonable alternative, short of, again, totally gutting a house and switching things around, which is just too burdensome. So we do believe there's an unnecessary hardship. And there's also, the lot is unique. Again, it's that back lot line that's creating this problem. If that was a straight line, this wouldn't be an issue. But it is what it is now, and that's what the lot line is, but at the time that this deck was built, which again, they didn't build it, it was a shorter setback, so it didn't create these problems. And then there's the public interest aspect. We believe that not only does this not harm the public interest, we actually think it supports the public interest of that neighborhood. Again, it's a natural, safe way to enjoy their backyard without dumping gallons of chemicals in their backyard to try to kill bugs and do that sort of thing, which Todd and Linda simply do not want to do. They live near the lake. They're just, they want to keep that as pristine as they can. And this type of structure is common in that neighborhood. There are other houses that have screened-in patios. This is not some obnoxiously large, huge screened-in patio that's going to stick out like a sore thumb. This'll fit right into that, to that neighborhood. And we do have, there was one letter submitted with the packet, and I'm sorry for those of you who aren't here, you don't have, there's a second letter that we brought today, but the back lot line neighbor wrote a letter in support, and that was Nina and Tim Cook. They have the lot that has the unique jet-out lot line. They're the ones who have the lot that had, with, if this were allowed to be built, it would be within their setback. And they have submitted a letter in support indicating they have no objection and they support the request. Another neighbor, the neighbor who would be immediately next to the deck, although there's no setback issues there, she, her name's Carol Devorak, D-V-O-R-A-K. I did provide a letter to Doug. I apologize. I can give you all copies if you need one. But she just gave that letter today. She's not here, but she likewise indicated she has no objection and supports the variance request. So we have not heard any objections to it, but we do think the public interest, not only not harmed, but would be served by the variance request. I'll stop talking. If you have questions for me or Todd or Linda, who we welcome.
Thank you. Doug?
Thank you. I can just formally reference the letters from Carol Devorak. So the neighbor at 5608 Thunderbird, the letter states, the removal of the current deck with the replacement of a screened, screened-in porch deck will not have a negative, will not have a negative impact on microtily, and they're in support. She is in support of the approval of the variance request.
Would you like to?
I'm Stan Nielsen and my wife Laura, we're on the lot to the right of the cars. And we are trying to also enhance the back of the yard, just like they are doing, and we have no versions at all to that porch and deck. There, I think, is great, gives a great opportunity for the kids that are there to play in there. And while we've been blessed with no bugs this year, we will contribute to the bugs when they come back. But we, we think this is a great addition and appreciate the opportunity to provide information on that.
Our concern is how they're going to get the material there, because we don't want them to use our driveway or damage our retaining wall that we had to put up when Engelbergers had all that fill brought in. And my husband's been working hard to have grass in the backyard alongside the garage be nicer. And so if they had equipment that they thought needed to be transferred on our property to get there, we would be very unhappy. We'd be concerned.
I can address that. And that won't be an issue. When the contractor came out, all the material will be brought to the backyard on the other side of the house. So yeah, we won't, we don't have to worry.
No, I know that they have used it to take shoes down on occasion, but no, they won't be using that side.
Does anybody have anything to say for the public hearing portion of this? Okay, then we'll close the public hearing and we'll go to number six, consideration of action. Todd and Linda Keller, 5612 Thunderbird Lane are requesting a variance, Manona Municipal Code of Ordinance, Section 480-24D4C, rear yard setbacks for the purpose of building a new screen porch and deck to the rear of the property, case number Z-007-2022. Doug?
Thank you. Very, very little else to add, really. As mentioned, the request here is simply for the screen porch. The posting did include the deck, just for more clarity for folks that receive the notice, but the variance request here is for the screen porch. As mentioned, it's a slight enlargement as well as an enclosure of an existing non-conforming. So the existing deck could be replaced, like-for-like, but because it's an expansion, that just needs the variance. The, I have been working with the applicant. I believe I originally asked for the survey and then sort of gone through these steps, having reviewed this, and it is that back corner where it sort of jumps in that causes the problem. The only variance being saw here is the rear yard, the 40, four-zero-foot setback.
Thank you. Doug, before I turn it over to the board, can you find any chance, and likeness, as to whether there actually was a change in the ordinance that where the, where the setback was? There was a reference to when it was built before, what's there now was probably built when there was a different size variance? Do you know if that's the case?
Yeah, I don't have the, I'm afraid, I don't, maybe the representative could, but the, I don't have the exact date when that information changed. We effectively make the assumption that it was, you know, legally committed at the time that it was built. That's as far as I have.
Okay, great. I just didn't know if we had any past record of other variances or, or, or if we knew when that change might have taken place.
Not to hand, no.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, I will turn it over to the board, assuming Todd and Linda, that you haven't watched, or maybe you have watched other ZBA meetings, but if you haven't, it's a very deliberative group. So, so if you, if there's a lot of silence, don't be, don't be concerned. Our, our, in deep thoughts around the stat, and around the statutes that we have to follow.
Okay.
Understood.
And the house was built 50 years ago. We built our house then, too.
Okay.
The, the current deck, what, what are the dimensions of the current deck?
Your current deck is 12 by 14.
It's on the Plata survey, and it's really hard to read because it's sometimes small in scale, but you can, even, if you enlarge it, it's, it's there.
So the 12 by 14 deck is going to be, if approved, going to become a 15 by 16-foot screen porch? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, did my math right? That would encroach on the setback by eight and a half feet, something like that.
That's about right, yeah.
And then, do you know why?
The lot line.
Yeah. Is there something there that?
I can only assume it's partially because of the, with Thunderbird being a cul-de-sac, but it's just the angle of the way that the lots are. It is sort of a lot line that runs, I guess, southeast from there. So that's probably why it is sort of jagged as it is on this lot, yeah.
It says there's a 10-foot wide easement and storm easement? Is that what that says?
In the back, yeah. Yeah, that looks, that appears to run through the lot, and I would imagine would run concurrently on that, would continue that path as well.
Entire plot of the neighborhood is. This is our lot here. This is the neighbors that's jetting in.
Yeah.
Yeah, all of the lots are pretty unique there.
Yes, it's yours, right?
So better or not, we have a choice. These must have been put in, I know, so these must have been put in before.
Correct.
The cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
So it looks like they're just trying to fit that into the puzzle net. Yeah, the ones that are already there.
Where are the? On this drawing here, are these the stairs coming from the?
Yes.
Okay, and is this the screen porch?
Yes.
Okay. And this is the house here?
Yes.
Okay.
Plans right now, you don't have it shifted over.
We do that.
It doesn't go beyond the side of the house? I know that picture kind of looked like it did, but it all stays within the house?
You have stairs now?
No.
No. There's no access off the current deck, so you'd have to kind of just jump off the deck.
Graduation.
I hope you don't break an ankle.
All right.
Is there an exit that's going to go with the lower deck?
There'll be stairs going down onto a lower?
There's gonna be a door going into the home.
There's a patio door down on the basement level.
Oh, gotcha. Okay.
Nancy, do you have a question? This is Wind80s, the Alternative Board Member. I have a question about the neighbors that are there. Apologize for their names. I forget the names. They had mentioned about, there's some concerns on their part about the one side of the house. Is there anything, as a board or committee, we have to pay attention to if they're really concerned about that usability on that side of the house and that they do not want any traffic through there? Is there something that needs to be written or concerns from our board point of view?
Just if they, just if they decide for some reason that to use it, that they will be responsible to, to repair the damage done. He says they are not planning to use that side of the house, but there were two trees that were supposed to be removed and promised, and they weren't done, so we're not sure if they're gonna be reliable to not change their mind.
Right, Doug, are you familiar with any precedent in terms of this group having a condition, conditions like we would in the Plan Commission?
I wouldn't say it's really within the zoning board's purview for that. It's typical that construction staging and things like that obviously happen either within the right-of-way with, with the necessary permit or on the applicant's property. So I think just the same as any other would need to. You know, any access or any permission to go onto private property would, would need permission, but I don't see it as necessary really for the zoning board to to rule upon that. As long as there's, you know, clear access, which it sounds like on the other side of the property, but it's more of a agreement, but you know, if anything changed, it would, it would need to be addressed between the two parties.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for that. My second immediate question or I guess, request is typically when we see a survey with a, that someone is asking for a variance in their plan, they'd be very precise on the measurement and showing that on the plans for exactly what they're asking for for a variance. I do not see that here. So my concern is if this happens to get passed, but by no, we don't have any documentation on, in here, that states the exact dimension and square footage that they're asking for. I'm going to request right now that that be done before, as part of that contingency moving forward.
Did you get the one that I forwarded?
I think we emailed that to Doug.
Yeah, the, the one that sort of shows it drawn on.
Yeah.
Yeah, I included that in the packet. That, that is part of the zoning board's packet. So to win to point though, it doesn't include the actual setback. Throwing on your previous question, that would, could absolutely be a condition of approval. We've done that in the past where that'd just be addressed and be at the contractor, you know, show exact measurements.
Yeah, but I would say that as the board, we have, right now, right in front of us, like, I can't see any measurements, right? I mean, I can see the 45.5 feet to the house, to the property line. I can see the easement measurements. I can see the size of the deck, but I have no way of knowing what that dimension is from the back corner of that new structure to the property line. I don't see any documentation here unless somebody lets me know on that.
Yeah, so actually, Beth, I would, I would, you obviously were guesstimating a minute ago, eight and a half feet. Where did, how did you figure that out?
Well, they, their existing deck is, on the survey, is 11.8 feet out, and then they want to add 3.2 more feet. And on the survey, it shows that, the bigger one, that to meet the setback from the house, they would only be able to go 6.3 feet from the house. So then I just subtracted those.
Okay.
Right. But I guess our point, right, as the board, right, to make these decisions for the public, we need to show those measurements. They should never be guessed at. As well as, there's a measurement of where the, the new and existing deck is and the new structure. We don't see the measurement from the corner of the house to where that structure starts. I mean, that is critical, because what happens is that slides on a scale right to left, and when we have a non-conforming lot in the back rear line, those dimensions change very quickly as you slide that deck left to right. Does that make sense? So I think those are important, the measurements that we need to have on there, just to make sure we're very clear and precise, which we want to be, right? So somebody can come up with those and make sure that those are clarified.
When are you suggesting that you're not prepared to, to vote on this tonight unless those are, are you, are you okay with Doug's suggestion that, that, that be a condition of?
Thanks, Nancy. Yeah, I would, I'm okay moving, I would vote on it tonight, but I would make the statement that I, that this not get, this not the, get a building permit until those documents are presented to the zoning, to zoning. And that's standard zoning requirements anyways. I don't believe this would even pass zoning if it was even in compliance and zoning. That should not pass. So, but that's our background, right? We're, that's just what we bring. So just a clarification there, right? Just make sure documentation is present. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Does it help to put in like a maximum variance that they cannot exceed an 8.7-foot variance?
Yeah, and again, that would definitely clarify, right? What, you know, if you're coming out 15 feet, what is left, right? And that would definitely clarify that, right? We don't, again, is it 8.65? Is it 8.7? Is it, you know, what, just what is it? In feet and inches?
Do you happen to know how far the edge of the deck is from the corner of the house? As Lynn says, it's not, it's not evident here. And it doesn't appear to be right on the corner.
It's not. It's probably, I'm just guessing. I would have to take a tape measure and measure it out, but it's probably about five feet in from the corner of the house.
Okay. Okay.
I think, uh, if I made it from a, a staff level, I. Thinking about a, a possible, um, you know, how this may, may move forward administratively post ZBA meeting. Uh, I would ask that the, the board consider the, the fifteen foot by sixteen foot, uh, screen porch as, as proposed. Um, and instead of maybe a, a maximum number or, or something like that, that maybe upon reevaluation couldn't be met. Uh, I think it would really be, I, I see in the, the sheet with it drawn on, um, that the. The left side of the deck, if you were looking back at the house, uh, appears to follow the same line as existing. And so it's really the addition, um, again, quick math of, you know, two feet and a couple inches there. Uh, to the, to the northeast corner, um, so. To, to almost use that as kind of the benchmark, given that that's already existing, um, and, and to have those, those measurements pointed out rather than a, um. X, you know, X feet away from the, the rail line, if, if that's, uh, that'll be my suggestion if, if the board is comfortable, um. Considering that.
Kind of anchoring it on this side.
Exactly. Everything is set from there with, with the footprint not changing as, as to what is proposed, but the. The dimensions certainly to be, to be shared, but not to, um. Necessarily have a number that, that's agreed upon, but the, the footprint itself, and if it meets, you know, the, the standards that, that the, the board has. That it would be agreeable and, and to sort of defer that to staff then.
Any other questions from the board?
I, I do not.
I do not.
Doug, Chris, do you have any more questions?
No, I don't have any more questions.
Does anybody have a motion?
Nancy, I'll motion, uh, to propose the. The variance, agreement with the variance, uh, under the condition that. All, uh, dimensions of the existing proposed fifteen by sixteen structure. Uh, the mentions of that structure are listed on the site, uh, site plan or the survey plan to the property line. As well as documenting the actual square footage of what they're asking for, for the easement.
Then, uh, when if you would, could you walk us through, uh, the. Our, um, the statutory. As part of your motion?
Yeah, so, um, I give the motion based on, um, the irregularity of the back rear line. Um, that has the ten foot easement, um, that. Unfortunately dictates asking for the variance. If, uh, does that make sense?
Uh, so that, that would be the unnecessary hardship or.
Correct.
Unique physical property limitations?
And it would be the unique physical property limitation, so thank you, yeah.
And do you wanna speak to either the first statute or the third statute as well in your motion? If you would.
Can you, I don't get to, I don't get to this very often, so can you help me with the, go with that?
Yeah, the, the, the first, uh, piece of the statute is unnecessary hardship. Um, uh, which is to say unnecessary hardship exists when the compliance would unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose. Or to render conforming with such restrictions unnecessarily burdensome. And then the third is, is, uh, the third is no harm to public interest.
Right, so, uh, right in my motion, um. Would be, uh, right with the unnecessary hardship, uh, is that what you're asking Nancy?
Yes.
Um. It would get this, uh, based on knowing that the easement line is there, right? I think I. My first, uh, comment, and if it wasn't, the easement was not there, this would not be a unnecessary hardship. And then, uh, uh, number three, uh, I don't see any harm to public interest, uh, being that it's in the rear lot line. And the condition of the neighborhood and how it's set with the, uh, right, um, with the nature, with the existing. Um, undeveloped area in the rear of the property that, uh. Is consistent with the neighborhood.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a, a second from Chris, any other discussion? Doug, do you feel like you have what you need?
I do, I, I would just clarify, uh, I think the. The easement and the, the rear proxy line were, were usable interchangeably there, I would just clarify that, that. The discussion was kind of the, the ten foot jog between the, the two lines, just, just clarify that with the, the maker, is, is that correct?
That is correct, Doug.
Great, thank you. Yes, I, I have what I need.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I, the, uh, motion carries. Uh, Todd and Linda, you have your variants.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, enjoy your porch.
Thank you.
We will.
And Nancy, thanks for, uh, helping me through the one, two, three.
Sure.
It's not always easy, but I know if I didn't ask, I know Doug would, so.
Yeah, thanks guys.
Uh, yep.
Thanks for your time, appreciate it.
Yep.
You're welcome.
You bet.
So we have a, a few more items before we adjourn, so, um. You all are welcome to leave, you're wel- you know, uh, we're not discussing anything that's not recorded, so if you wanna stay until the end of the meeting, that's up to you.
Doug, can we touch base with you tomorrow? I'm just getting you the documents.
Yeah, I'll, I'll wait, you know, what I need, um, then maybe with the contract with the survey, but we'll, we'll figure that out. Before the voting.
Perfect, great, thank you.
Okay, uh, next up is, uh, the next meeting date. Doug?
Yes, so, uh, I propose that we, following, uh, last month's discussion, we'll, we'll cancel the September fifteenth meeting. I do have, you know, one application that I received, um, just yesterday, um, but at this point I'll probably have to push to the October meeting. Um, just with, with availability, um, but I will just coordinate with them and make sure, um, we're on the same page. But like I said, it just came in, so it, it hasn't, you know, been in the queue already for a few weeks or anything.
Okay.
That, that would be October thirteenth?
Uh, twentieth. Yeah.
So the next meeting is the twentieth rather than the September meeting?
Yes.
Okay, any updates, discussion on diversity, equity, inclusion?
Nothing for me.
Nothing for me, either, uh, updates, discussion on sustainability?
Nothing from, from staff.
Nothing as well, okay, um, for those of you on the, um, on the board who may not understand those two items. Or understand why sustainability, um, was added to the agenda again and when this may be because you're not here very often. I'll, I'll enlighten you as well, um, those two items are two commitments that the city has made. Uh, rather holos- holistically, uh, on a citywide basis and, um, the intent is to encourage people. Staff, uh, committees, commissions, boards, um, as well as, uh, commission, uh, committee members. To, and city council members to report out when, when we've done things, because we're finding that there's just too many things, like for instance, on the sustainability front. You know, a lot of departments are doing good things, uh, you know, like everything is recycled. Uh, as an example, when we're now doing streets and public works. Um, uh, you know, um, street, uh, you know, uh, renovations like we're doing down in Wintercore right now and. So, uh, but there's, and, and Parks and Rec just bought two new. Very cool, uh, electric bikes, so they don't have to drive the truck to every park when they're, uh, when they're doing, uh, things on. Park and rec, um, and those are just a few examples that were, you know, we're not necessarily capturing those and. Really being able to, uh, keep track, uh, you know, of the progress that we're making as well. So we're, we're really hoping that having both of these, um, on the agenda, that's why they're there.
Great, thank you, yeah, appreciate that update.
Yep, uh, with that, I'll take a, a motion to adjourn unless anybody has anything else.
Oh, I just wanted to add just, uh, one quick thing, I guess it's maybe give me, it's a pat, a pat on the back for all the board members. I got to read through last month's, uh.
Yeah.
It was quite extensive.
It was.
Um, and, uh, I actually read through that entire, uh, plan details, uh, prior to that. Uh, just because that's what I do, right? I guess is a, you know, it's in my biz, whatever. Um, so I was very curious, interested in that project, so I have to say I was. Uh, I was pleasantly, um, I wasn't surprised. I was like honored to read through all of the questions that the board members brought to the table.
Mm-hmm.
And appreciate their, their, uh, questions and intensity, and I'm sure that meeting felt like that if I could. I'm guessing, assuming, but I don't wanna assume, right? But I think the board did a wonderful job on how they, uh, approached that, that whole, uh, that whole. Um, application, um, and where it went, so I just wanted to say thank you for, for doing, uh, thank you for being. Um, on the board.
Great, thank you, um. Okay, uh, I have, I still have a motion to adjourn on the table, I think.
I'll move to adjourn.
Hey, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.